Sorry, Josh.
Board members.
We didn't hit the record button. Can you just start that statement over? I'm so sorry.
Yeah, are you ready?
Yes.
The session is being audio recorded. Please be advised that today we are also recording the video of the proceedings. We will not use the chat feature in this meeting. To ensure good sound quality, the default rule for this meeting is that everyone will remain on mute. Board members and staff will generally remain on mute except when speaking or voting. Public comment will only be accepted during the public hearing portion of the meeting. The chair will announce when the hearing is open and will ask for public comment. Public comments will not be accepted after the hearing is closed. If a member of the public creates an audio or video disruption, they may be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of staff or the chair. When the hearings open, when the hearing opens, you may give your comments in the following manner. Use the raise hand feature in Zoom and wait to be called on. Before the hearing closes, we will ask for any new comments from people who are only able to join by phone or unable to use the raise hand feature. If multiple people attempt to speak at once, staff will help moderate. State your name and your address for the record. If multiple people wish to speak, the meeting moderator will call on you individually. Please listen for instructions. Where's the raise hand feature? Does everybody know where that is?
Should be down at the bottom of your screen. It depends on what platform you're on. And you can also open the chat feature. There should be an option to raise hands somewhere in there as well.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, mine, you have to hit the more button on mine, three dots, maybe. Okay, does everybody understand that?
No.
I'm not who said that.
Everybody on, if you could all mute yourselves except for the chair, please, including members of the public at this point.
Yeah, I don't know. You got a lot of people here. Okay, we're gonna go back, go back to finish reading this. We appreciate your attendance at this meeting. Should you have any questions about this process, you may call our our staff at eight six oh four 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 five eight one three after the meeting has ended. Call to order appointment of alternates. Good evening. The zoning board of appeals, public meeting of the town of Waterford is now in session. This is the second day of December two thousand twenty. In the beginning, the meeting actually began at six thirty. All decisions of the board are final. In accordance with the Connecticut general statutes, section eight dash eight P, any person agreed by any decision of the board may take an appeal to the Superior Court. The appeal shall be commenced in accordance with the section eight dash eight F and G within fifteen days from the date of the notice of decision was published as required by general statutes. The zoning board of appeals, recording secretary will now take role. Hannah?
Thank you, Josh. Joshua Friedwin?
Here.
Catherine Newland?
Here.
Thank you.
Anne Darling?
Here.
Michelle Crips?
Here.
Thank you. Warren McKenzie? Absent. Jason Mariaski?
Here.
Danielle McCarty? Absent. And Darcy Van Ness?
Here.
I also want to remind everyone that according to the executive order, all speakers, including participants in any public comment required or permitted such as meetings taking part in such meeting or proceedings shall clearly state their name and title if applicable before speaking on each occasion that they speak. Thank you.
Did, is Warren here or not?
No, I guess not.
He's not, right? Okay, so we're gonna appoint Darcy Van Ness in Warren's place. Okay, are we ready? Approval of the November fourth, twenty twenty meetings, meeting minutes? Are there any corrections to the submitted minutes?
Uh, yeah.
You have.
Yes, thank you, Josh. On item number three, exhibit three, there was a typo site plan comma that has to be deleted. And then the other part is, the other section is the town attorney statement under applications EBA twenty dash seven. And everybody should have received it, received the amended minutes also in their packets. And that was, that was the only two revisions that needed to be made on my end.
Are there any, any corrections to be submitted to the minutes from the board? Are there any taxes to making the corrections that Anna had stated? No objections? And are there any further corrections?
Not from staff.
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
I second it. Okay.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor of minutes being approved as corrected? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Corrections and minutes have passed. Thank you. Receipt of applications, we have new, new applications. Public hearing, application ZBA dash two zero dash eight, appeal of Harry F. and Judith A. Haynes trustees owners. Harry F. Haynes applicant and Brian Florrick LS agent at two forty one Shore Road R forty zone. A variance is requested from zoning regulations, section five point four point two, side yard setback variance of nine point six feet to allow a side yard setback of fifteen point four feet. Variance is required to construct in addition to the existing home as shown on plan entitled property survey land belonging to Harry F. and Judith A. Haynes trustees two forty one Shore Road, Waterford, Connecticut dated nine thirty twenty twenty. Exhibit lists, exhibit one, application and support material dated October twenty third, twenty twenty. Exhibit two, site plan dated September thirtieth, twenty twenty. Exhibit three, certificate of mailing dated November seventeenth, twenty twenty. Exhibit four, staff report memo title. Application number is ZBA dash twenty dash eight, single family residential setback branches dated November twenty third, twenty twenty. We will now hear from the applicant. Brian Florrick will present.
Well, good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody. Brian Florrick. Florrick Surveying LLC, representing Harry and Judy Haynes, two forty one Shore Road. They're requesting, like Josh said, a side yard setback variance of nine point six feet. To provide you a little bit of background on the property, it's in a R forty zone. It was purchased by Harry and Judy in, on December seventeenth, two thousand, two thousand and one. Harry and Judy would like to build an in-law apartment on the northeast corner of their house. This area was, was chosen specifically because of the topography in the front yard being so severe, the slope. It was also chosen because of the bulkhead access to the basement is in the middle of the back of the house. And it couldn't be put on the southern end of the, of the house because of access to the garage. And I would have had to have requested a variance on that side as well. So it would have blocked the garage. So it was, it was chosen at that northeast corner for a very specific reason. And the slope in the front is just, it would, it would have been a difficult build. So provided our letters of budding neighbors within a hundred fifty feet in support of the project. It's pretty straightforward. There's a house plan or a floor plan with the provided package showing what they want to do, how they want to utilize that, that addition. So I open up the questions. If anybody has any questions or comments, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions from the commission? Kathy, you have no questions?
Go ahead and unmute yourself, Michelle.
Okay, thank you. I did have a chance to drive by the property yesterday and actually go up the driveway and I spoke to Mr. Haynes and saw the plans that he has, his handwritten plans. And it makes a lot of sense to be able to build in that particular location. And reading the report from the different neighbors, it seems that the neighbors are all in favor of going forward with it. So I, I'm, I have a positive look on it. I think it should be positively looked. That's all.
Is there, are there any staff comments on this?
I indicated in the staff report that you should note that the existing pre-existing non-conforming building encroaches already into that side yard, eight point four feet. And the addition is only a minimal encroachment into the required rear yard by one point two feet. It's a very minimal increase in lot coverage. It's well below what they're permitted. So it's a modest request. And that, that was really all of my comments.
So I guess the question is, you said it, the backyard setback is encroaching one point two feet?
It's only an additional encroachment of one point two feet.
It's already, it's already below the minimum.
It's already over the side yard. If you look at the, Anna, can you pull up the zoning?
Yeah, I'm looking, it'd be twenty five and it's fifteen point four.
Yep, exactly.
And they're asking for a little bit more.
Yep.
So, I mean, this building couldn't have been shortened by a foot and a half or to just keep it in, in line with the pre-existing non-conforming?
That would still require a variance because they were increasing the non-conformity along the side yard line.
Right.
And, and the reason for that is just to square the house off. Basically to keep it in a straight line.
Okay. Is there, we can now open this to public comment? Is there anybody from the public that wants to speak in favor of this application?
Yes, I don't have a, a raise hand option. Yes, hi. My name is Robert Montanari. I reside at two four three Shore Road, which is adjacent.
State your name again.
Robert Montanari.
Okay. Thank you. You, you speaking in favor of this?
Yes, I am in favor. I'm adjacent to the property at two forty one Shore Road. I've been neighbors with Harry for maybe twenty years now. And I urge this board to approve of this. I have no qualms with this whatsoever.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that wants to speak in favor of this application? Anybody want to speak in favor? Is there anybody from the public that wants to speak against this application approval? I'll state it again. Is there anybody that wants to speak against this application? One more time, anybody want to speak against this application? Okay, so at this point, I guess you want to make a motion to close the hearing or is there any other, anybody from the board that wants to make any more statements or questions or? Okay, so I don't know. Do we need to do, do a motion to close this or I just close it?
I, you can just close it.
Okay, hearing no more statements in favor or against this application, the public hearing is now closed. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go into old business.
Thank you.
The next business. In order to discuss the application table that November fourth, twenty twenty special meeting. At the previous meeting, Anne Darling just recused herself for business reasons. Therefore, we must seat Darcy Van Ness for Anne during discussion of this application.
Darcy's already been seated for Warren, so we're gonna need to see Jason at this point.
We're gonna see who? I'm sorry.
Jason Mariaski will need to be seated because Darcy has already been seated for Warren.
Right. So we're gonna see Jason Mariaski for Anne Darling in this discussion. Jason, you there?
Yeah.
Okay. Application ZBA dash twenty dash seven, appeal of James in June, Winow, owners of, yeah, and applicant in Brian Florrick LS agent at four Ellen Ward Road. C dash MF zone. Variance is requested from zoning regulations, section eight point four, side yard setback variance of seven point five feet to allow us side yard setback of twenty two point five feet. And sixteen point one minimum lot variance of thirty four hundred and fifty square feet to allow a minimum lot size of twenty six thousand five hundred and eighty-five square feet. Variance is required to fix an overlapping boundary issue discovered on deeds brought forth, which did not properly compensate for the residential structures as shown on the plan entitled lot and revision survey. Properties belonging to James and June Winow for Ellen Ward Road dated ten fourteen twenty twenty is now pending. Is there a motion on the floor to approve or deny this application?
Okay, I found this on the web. First, there are motions.
Sorry. Talk to you. Do we have a motion from the board to approve or?
We need to have a motion either for or against the application so that we can open it for discussion and then after discussion, we'll take a vote on whether or not the motion will carry.
Make a motion to approve the the variance.
Do you want to state any reasons or?
We can incorporate findings as we go through the draft findings that staff had prepared.
All right. Is there a second to that Kathy's motion?
I will second it.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Anna, go ahead and bring up the draft.
Did the, did the town attorney get his answers, his questions answered?
The town attorney reviewed the application. I don't know if Brian had any direct discussion with him. He did not, the town attorney did not offer any additional follow-up on this application. So I believe that he was satisfied.
Yeah, I did not have any discussion with him. Brian Florrick, Florrick Surveying LLC.
Thanks, Brian.
So is there any more discussion?
I'd like to go over the draft findings that Anna is going to pull up on the screen here.
Okay.
Should be the last thing. Yep. You could a bit thicker. Okay, yep. All right. So we've already discussed what the request was based on the read-in and information that Josh gave us at the beginning of this discussion. So we are aware that they're asking for a couple of variances in order to move that lot line between the two homes because of the overlap of the existing building. So the background is similar, that the applicant is proposing a lot line adjustment to correct an issue found in the deeds which have been carried forward over time that results in an existing structure on six Ellen Ward Road overlapping the common property line with four Ellen Ward Road. Currently, the site contains an existing single-family dwelling and associated accessory structures and a pool. No alterations are proposed to any of the existing improvements on the property at this time. If the board decides to approve the application has determined that there is a legal hardship, we need to consider the decision for criteria contained in section twenty seven point five of the zoning regulation. And we should note our responses to each section. The first section is twenty seven point five A. The size and intensity of the proposal under consideration and its potential impact on the surrounding neighborhood, including consideration of past ownership patterns involving the property in question and adjacent properties and changes in the zoning regulations which have occurred since the lot in question was created. So as we've learned, the subject parcel is located within a CMF zoning district. Historically, the property has been used as a single-family home, which is a permitted use in the zoning district. There are no proposed changes to the existing improvements on the property. Therefore, there should be no impact to the surrounding neighborhood. Twenty seven point five B. The existence of conditions of the same kind and/or character on other properties within the surrounding neighborhood. There are no proposed changes as we've discussed, the existing improvements on the property that would necessitate comparison to similar conditions on surrounding properties. This is a simple lot line adjustment. Twenty seven point five C. The impact on the proposed request would have on the capacity of adjacent streets to handle heat traffic loads without causing congestion and without creating any traffic hazards. Again, there are no proposed changes to the existing improvements on the property. Therefore, there will be no impact to existing traffic conditions, nor will it create additional traffic hazards. Twenty seven point five D. The possible obstruction of light or air or the emission of noise, light, smoke, odor, gas, dust, or vibration in noxious or offensive quantities which may, which might be caused by the proposal under consideration and the impact such conditions might have on adjacent properties. Again, being that there are no proposed changes to the property that would cause any significant light or air obstructions nor any increased noise emissions, light, smoke, odor, gas, dust, or vibrations in noxious or offensive quantities that may impact the adjacent properties. Twenty seven point five E. The resultant effect the proposal under consideration would have on the value and utilization of other properties within the surrounding neighborhood. This boundary line adjustment to correct an overlapping structure should not have any effects on the value and utilization of other properties within the surrounding neighborhood. Twenty seven point five point F. The existence of unusual topography on the property in question and the nature, location, and height of all existing and proposed buildings, walls, fences, and landscaping on the site in question. The location of the existing residential structure on six Ellen Ward that overlaps the common boundary line is an unusual configuration impacting both properties. Adjusting the boundary line to enable each parcel structure to be contained within their boundaries would alleviate potential issues for both properties moving forward. Twenty seven point five G. The extent, nature, and arrangement of all existing and proposed parking facilities, driveways, and roadways on the site in question. There are no changes proposed to the existing improvements on the property. Therefore, there's no changes. Twenty seven point five H. Any problems which might be created with regard to providing fire and/or police protection to the site in question or to adjacent properties? Again, there are no proposed changes to the property that would negatively impact fire and/or police protection to the subject property or adjacent properties. Twenty seven point five I. The preservation of the character of the neighborhood. Again, as there are no proposed changes to the existing improvements on the property, therefore, the character of the neighborhood will not be impacted. Twenty five, seven point five J. The location of existing water and sewerage systems serving the subject site and the adequacy of such systems to support any additional construction on the property. The parcel is serviced by public water and sewer service and no changes affecting capacity are proposed. And lastly, twenty seven point five K. All other standards prescribed by these regulations. So the, excuse me, the board has considered the proposal and it appears we have determined that the requested variants are minimum, the minimum necessary to reasonably use the property. The boundary line adjustment will not create any perceivable changes to the property, thereby preserving the surrounding neighborhood while eliminating an egregious error discovered in historic deeds carried forward over time. And that is that. And there's a motion that you can include just below.
Kathy, you're, she in there? You, you want to restate your motion to include any details?
I will amend my motion to approve the, the variance because it corrects the overlapping building and it's an acceptable use and it's in keeping with the neighborhood and doesn't make any changes to the adjacent, other adjacent properties. I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion before we vote? All those in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? No, no opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great night. Bye. Good night.
Okay. Thank you. Next order of business is to vote on the annual report fiscal year twenty twenty.
So the annual report was presented to you all last month. Nothing has changed in the report. However, we do need a formal approval of our board
Right.
to submit to the board's selection.
Make a motion to approve.
I second it.
Who was that? Oh, Michelle?
Yeah.
The discussion on this? All those in favor of approving the budget or annual report?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? No opposed? The motion carries. Next order of business. Is addressed revised twenty twenty one schedule of meetings. The CEO has conflict the first week of February and is requesting the meeting be moved to the second Wednesday in February as a result. I can't make the second Wednesday, so, or I, I might be able to make a half an hour, but I have a board meeting another on, on second Wednesdays. So I don't know, Kathy, can you, can you chair that day?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. So is there motion on the floor to approve or deny revised twenty one scheduled meetings?
I propose that we approve that schedule.
Is there a second?
Anne Darling, I second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all.
New business? Is there any other new business to discuss? Next meeting will be January sixth at six thirty PM.
There is no other new business.
Right. Correspondence? Any correspondence?
There is no other correspondence.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn. I make a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion. Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you.
No.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays.
Stay well and stay safe, please.
Yeah.
We're gonna close now. All right.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you, Josh.
I'm here.
Everyone. Have a good evening.
Stay safe and healthy.
Yes.
Go ahead and end for all.
Okay.
Good night. Thank you.
It's all closed. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Okay, take care.
Good night, everyone.
Hi, great to hear the laughs.
Bye.